Okay, the county, Razz County Commissioner will meet and workshop, it's August 13th, 1:30, Commissioner's courtroom, the county administration building, two, uh, one oh, 200 South Texas Avenue, one suite 106. First item is called of order, and the second is presentation discussion of the FY 24-25 county budget, and I'm gonna turn it over to Nina.
Good afternoon, everyone. And first, we're gonna discuss the special revenue funds. So let's go ahead and get started. The special revenue funds are regarding fees that are brought into the county, and so a lot of this is by statute, and we're gonna go through one by one, showing what is going to be budgeted for next year in the proposed budget. The first off is gonna be hotel occupancy tax fund. As you see, it's going to be increased from 4.3 million from last year to 6.3 this next year. Part of the increase is due to the deferred maintenance. We're gonna go ahead and budget 2.5 million in deferred maintenance for the expo, and this is if the 10 million in the general fund, which will be discussed Tuesday, when I cover it. So as you can see where it says repairs and maintenance, that is where the 2.5 million is budgeted, as well as $40,000 in a wireless replacement at the expo. We also increased the venue tax, where you see it's 1.05 million, and this is to balance the revenue. And I just wanna remind everybody, due to the hotel tax fund, it's based on tax code 352.002, and what this fund will support is operations, as well as bringing heads and beds, and repairs, maintenance for the facility. Any questions? I do wanna mention that the fund balance in this account, the county auditor budget ship was 6.5, but I am only going to budget 2.3, with the, with thinking that if we have to close the expo to get some of this maintenance done, I will have revenues for the incoming year to cover the operations. The next one is going to be state lateral fund. This is a decrease, is increase to the budget for next year at 284,000. Right now, they're using this year's funding for the Bridge Scour project. Unclaimed property fund, it has increased to 109,000, is very specific to that fund. The law library, it's also an increase to 267,500. This covers for the subscriptions that the attorneys and the district judges and the other judges use, like West Law. This is a local provider partnership fund, which we also call the LPPF. This is the revenue that is brought in from local hospitals, based on a tax rate that the Commissioner's Court set just for the hospitals, and is increasing from 58 million to 62 million, is very specific to this fund, to support hospital care. The law enforcement education fund, it is increasing from 83,000 to 119,000 for next year. And the different departments use this for education, training. County records management, it's a very, very specific to this fund, it's also a fee that's brought in, and what the county records, um, what we should use it for is for retention or for scanning archiving records. It is up to the county clerk at this moment, and is increasing to 729,400. Again, it's very specific to archival. The county clerk records management fund, this is for count, the county clerk to use, is increasing from 6.8 to 1.628, and she uses this to support some of the old books that she has over in the county clerks, to go ahead and put them on Laserfish or CD, it's the old books from like the 1800s and such. The same thing, the county clerk archival fund, it's used for the same purpose, is for archival. It's going from 1.6 million to 1.7. The courthouse security fund, it's increasing from 170,000 to 251. If you remember, a couple years ago, we had to remove the personnel out of this division because we were not, it was unable to support it, and also there was a new statute, so we moved this, the courthouse security from this fund, and moved them directly under the sheriff's administration, but anything that is operational expenses should still come from this fund, like badges, anything that the courthouse security is needing, daily operations, they are able to still use this fund instead of using the sheriff's office administration. Justice court security fund, this is an increase from 242,000 to 301,000. This fund is for any justice of the peace outside of the county courthouse, and it's based on security. So if you have a justice of the peace that is outside the courthouse, this is what the fund could support for security. The district clerk records management fund, it is increased from 264,000 to 429. I do wanna make a note that in this fund, there are several temp positions that they needed to be reclassified to regularly part-time positions, and so you can see that and reflect of the benefits, so they're able to get retirement, just because they're working over a certain amount of time during their pay periods, and they needed to be reclassified correctly. The district clerk archival fund, it's the same as the county clerk, but in a different office. They're able to use 1,765 dollars for archival, and so hopefully this next year, this fund will be depleted. Justice of the peace technology fund, this is for the JP's. They're able to use anything technology related, so if they go to a conference and a certain part of the agenda is technology based, they're able to use that percentage out of this fund. They also support the constables' ticket riders, so if a ticket rider goes down, they need to go to the JP, and they can ask for a ticket rider to be replaced, and in the past, they have been nice enough to do that, as well as this last year, you see a decrease to this next year's budget is because we did upgrade constable, sorry, precinct to three and fours courtroom with better technology in the courtroom, and so of course, that took a lot of the funding The county and district court technology fund, you see it's a small increase from 129,000 to 148,000. This is very specific to the courthouse over to any courtrooms in the courthouse, and it's very specific on what it can be used for regarding technology, so if a, if a courtroom needs to be updated, we're able to use this fund, which is not much, but it can support it. The forfeiture fund, it is increasing slightly from 33,000 to 3, 37,000, and this is very specific to the sheriff's office, constables, district attorney. The district attorney hot check fund collection, this is up to the district attorney to use what he need, whatever he needs fit, and of course, it comes from the hot checks collected. You see a small increase from 4950 to 5550 for next year. The bill bond board fund has a slight increase from 108,000 to 121,000, and this is used to support the bill bond board, and it's very statute related. Motor registration fund, this is for the tax office. You can see that there's no funds budgeted. We have moved this budget into the general fund last couple of years. The vehicle inventory interest fund, this is specific to the tax office regarding vehicle related items, and it can only be used for vehicle related items, say software, or if a computer fails, she's able to, if that computer fails regarding vehicle motors, she's able to purchase the item as long as the state agrees. You see, it's a small increase from 348,000 to 428,000. The sheriff's office crime fund, this is specific to the sheriff's office. It's increasing slightly from 113,000 to 120,000. The next one is district attorney crime fund, specific to the district attorney. I do wanna make a note that there was three temporary positions that were housed in this fund. Speaking with the district attorney, we have discussed to delete two of the temporary positions to create one full time, since this fund is able to support it, to help with discovery. It's been noted that it's hard to get some of the outside agencies to submit items for cases, and so this person will go in and hound and try to get the, the proper document for a specific case. You see, it's a small, a small decrease based on creating those, that one position, because it's gonna be full benefits. The primary election services fund, it is going to increase slightly from 90,000 to 91.5. This supports certain things that the elections office needs, and it's regarding a fee that's collected through here, and it can only be used for specific elections The county attorney operating fund, specific to the county attorney. You can see it's decreasing slightly from 70,000 to 69,000, because they did use some of it this year. Before we move on to the grants, does anybody have any questions regarding the special Okay, the grants. I do wanna show that there's certain grants that we have that will be budgeted during October 1. The Texas Inigent Defense Commission grant for 1.5. The Department of Justice Sheriff's Office for 375,000 statewide automated vehicle notification service savings grant is 30,000. The TJJD grant, this is the supplement, as well as certain positions that are housed under this grant. It is budgeted 2.74. The state home, uh, state homeland security budget 24,000, the MPO, 521,000, American Rescue Plan Act, 36,000, 36 million, and the real law enforcement sorry, assistant program at 1 million. You do see that the transfers in, and I will explain each one specifically for that program. 316,000 will be coming from the general fund. 20% of that is specific to that grant this next year, and the grant, we have to support 20% from the general fund, 80% from the grant, so 316,000 is part of it, as well as 20,000 that will be transferred to this grant to help with the software upgrade. The 817,000 for the TJJD grant, it is, the grant is only supplying 1.9 of it. Due to the positions under the grant, the county has to support the remaining of 817,000. The American Rescue Plan Act, there's 20,884 that is remaining for the ARPA grant. 15 million will be transferred over to help support the medical examiner's office, and we'll go into detail to that specific grant. Specific to the grant fund, you can see that went from 5 million in 2024 to 5.2 million due to the transfers for the TJJD grant, as well as the Texas Inigent Defense Grant. Is there any questions regarding those two transfers? The next up is American Rescue Plan Act, and this is the ARPA grant. Earlier this morning in Commissioner's Court, it was approved to move the 1 million from broadband to the medical examiner's office, which is accounted in that 20 million, as well, within the grant, we still pay for trailer or contract services to help manage the grant, as well as this year, we had, we had the, part of the medical examiner's office in the general fund to help accounting purposes and to keep it all in one place. We have decided between the auditor and I to move all this into the fund, into the grant fund, so it's one place and it's easier to, to locate it. That's where that 15 million is coming from. Any questions regarding the American Rescue? The next one is the SB 22 grant, and this was for the district attorney, the county attorney, and the sheriff's office. It goes towards stipends or salary just misses to those, to the county attorney and district attorney, and for the sheriff's office are using it for equipment and I, and other items, and so that's where the 1.05 is coming from.
That's the Senate Bill 22.
Any questions regarding the grant fund before we move on to debt? For the debt fund, which is general obligation debt service fund, you could tell that in 2024, it was budgeted 12,830,000. This next year, we're increasing it to 14,807,000 to pay off the current debt for that year, as well as to budget just a little extra if we go out for debt during the spring, it will help cover those costs. Are there any questions regarding debt?
Yeah, what, our, our total indebtedness, uh, year over year went from, what to what? How much, how much net, how mu, how much net, did we issue any net new indebtedness?
For this past year?
Yes.
Let me add, the county auditor will show the revenue.
Because I know we've, I know we've, over a period of time, we amortize it, but it's always interesting to see how much additional net obligations we have.
And I have amortized for the next couple of years. Let me get it real quick. So if you're looking at the amortized schedule, let me pull this up real quick. This is for the next couple of years. Sorry if it's hard to read. 117 million.
Where are you looking?
I'm sorry, right here.
So we went from, I'm reading this correctly, 130 million to 117?
Yes, and this next year will pay off one, one obligation.
Okay, and that's just normal retirement according to the schedule?
Yes.
Okay, and our anticipated plan to issue either new, uh, certificates of obligations, not that are already authorized. How much authorized and unissued do we have?
For the road bond?
Uh, not just our referendum debt, but also our certificates of obligation.
The voters approved 100 million in road bonds.
Right.
You need to speak in the mic if you're gonna talk.
Right, yeah.
The voters approved 100 million in road bonds, 20 of which was for local roads, and 80 million was for tech stop roads. We have issued 30 million of that and anticipate issuing another 20, I would assume, not quite sure yet, in the spring of 2025. We could take that opportunity to issue certificates of obligation at that time if you wanted to, and that will be a question when we get there.
Yeah, we'll have to get to that, how we're gonna handle capital improvements. I was, I would imagine that that's item E. Okay, okay, so on the, on the referendum debt, we're gonna, we're anticipating that we're gonna issue an additional 20 million dollars, and that will be all, uh, on system?
We will need 15 million for on-system roads.
15 on?
I just picked 20 million because I like the number, but we will need 15 million.
Okay, and then the other 5 million would be off?
Like I said, it was just, we still have other, we could issue for another 10 million for off-system roads, county roads, if we wanted to, or five, or whatever we feel like we think we can actually use, and then...
But we're pretty sure on the 15 million from talking with the...
That's gonna be for the George Bush grade separation, yes. As a matter of fact, we got a draft contract today.
All right. But overall, we went from 130 to 117?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so our debt service requirement that we're anticipating is gonna go down from, uh, it'll go down below four cents per hundred, I would assume?
Yes, the estimated, excuse me, the calculated debt service tax rate will be .037866.
876, okay, and that would, and that anticipates issuing 15?
No, sir.
Okay.
It can't, because I have to certify debt already issued only. I can't certify to be included in the debt service calculation, debt that has not been issued.
Okay, so that's to handle the 117 that's outstanding?
Yes, sir.
All right. And our current rate's about .04?
0714.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Katie.
If I have one more question?
Could you speak into the mic, please?
Stevie, yeah, speak into, please, speak into the mic.
I want wellness credit on that.
Any anticipation, any anticipation that we've got any...
Steve, please speak into the mic, can't hear you down here.
Yeah, any anticipation that we have any refundable or issues that are out there? Or they, are we all pretty much at lower interest rates than current market with what is remaining of this $117 million?
Haven't gotten a call from the financial advisors. They usually call when we have callable lower interest to let us know if we want to refund it, if we can take advantage of any savings that way.
So we turn that corner and we'll see where we go from here?
Yes.
Okay.
Moving on, it's going to be the Health and Life Fund. Since our health insurance is self-insured, it is increasing from $26,341,000 to $33,636,000. As you know, that we are not increasing the health insurance on the county, nor the employee portion this next year, we're keeping the same as the current year. At this moment, there's not really any departmental increases, the rest will be stuck in contingency for the what-ifs, since we didn't see an increase in health insurance, we're not sure what this next year is going to happen. I do want to make a note that we, the county auditor's office did separate contingency from departmental support like it has been in the past, and so you're going to see an extra line item within the budget. And so this is very specific, so when you look, and it's going to be for any fund or division that has specific contingency rights, say for instance, the Health and Life Fund, this is where you'll see the contingency stuck at by million, and the only way to use is by budget amendment. Are there any questions regarding the Health and Life Fund?
I'll just, let's all stay healthy.
Do you want to make a note that they did, mentioned that dental is going up on the employee side? Small portion, dental will be going up on the employee side. I know there was a question previously regarding if there was money transferred to and from the Health and Life Insurance from the general fund. I do want to show that for the past experience, and this is what was in the act for, sorry if I have to pull it back up.
Which used to be the CAFER.
Huh?
Which used to be the CAFER, right?
Yes.
Okay.
It's ABCs.
I hear you.
Let me make it a little bit bigger. And this is based on the audited financials. As you can see, that the creation of the Medical Examiner's Office Division was created by Commissioners' Court in 2014. The opening of the doors was opened on March 2018. As you can see, between several years, we actually had to transfer in from the general fund a couple of times to help support the expenditures because the revenue was not coming in as expected. A lot of times within the revenue, if we're not meeting, if we're not able to cover the expenditures, a lot of times the county auditor will recognize additional revenue during that year, closer to the end of the fiscal year, to support some of the expenditures. So a lot of times, the revenue, you'll see if it's budgeted, has increased, and that is the purpose of the county auditor allowing us to recognize it, to cover the expenditures. And as you can see, there were certain years it was up and down, and this was due to some of the high claimant costs during those years, and so we were unsure if we were going to be able to support the expenditures, and that's why some of the transfers took place.
Okay, but now we have an $8.7 million net position?
Yes, sir, and right now it's budgeted in contingency, and it only can be used based on Commissioners' Court approval. Okay.
All right.
Any questions?
Yeah, can you go back to that one again?
Oh, yeah. I do have it by budget versus actuals. Again, this is last minute, and so I can show it to you as well.
Yeah, no, just the end of '23, I mean, I don't, from watching budget versus actuals, I haven't seen anything that says we're not going to have...
I think we'll be okay this year.
Yeah, we're going to have the type of increase, once again. I just like, at the time I brought up the question when we were talking about life and health, when was that?
You had a question regarding the OPEB?
Yeah, and then what are liability, I went back and looked at the actuarial that we had done on the OPEB, and I think it was like 2018?
It's just where the county auditor...
Was the last time we had it done, the actuarial? You know, and I know that there's a whole lot of ifs out there, but we're getting closer to the period of time to where the ifs start going away.
We have an actuarial study of our OPEB plan every two years, calendar year.
Okay.
And so as a matter of fact, we just turned it, we were just turning in information for this year's calculation.
Gotcha, okay, so we'll, and, but the statutory, I guess the question, why I ask the question is, is, so we've got $8.7 million, do we need to hold on to that type of fund balance, and if not, what should we, what are we, statutorily, or what do we have the ability to be able to do with that fund balance?
There are no statutory restrictions that I'm aware of of what you can do with that fund balance. You could transfer it back to the general fund and make a transfer to OPEB if you wanted to. Our, my one concern about paying for it straight out of health and life is because our OPEB actually supports the Health District also, as well as CSCD, and so doing an actuarial study with those nuances in place gets it a little complicated. So it would be better for the county to fund what the county wanted to fund, and we account for it in the county's share of the OPEB plan.
Yeah, but like I said, I just, I want to make sure that we're not taking money out of people's pockets, that we don't need to be taken, and if we have funds that are balances that are, you know, historically going back 10 years, more than, almost twice the average, and I guess the question would be is, is, should we, does it make sense for us to sit on, let's call it 4 million, at the net position ending? Does it make sense for us to be sitting on $4 million that we might be able to use to benefit the citizens of Brazos County some other way?
That would be up to Commissioners' Court. We have not budgeted it that way.
Right, right.
In the potential proposed budget.
Yeah.
Well, and I might remind you that there were a couple of, or more than a couple, I think it was three, might have been four, that were, they were getting high-dollar drugs, and I don't remember the exact number, but it was close to...
Million dollars a month, I think it was.
It was estimated a million dollars a month during that time.
Yeah.
And it was for several years.
If you hit one of those, and drugs today, I believe, are probably just as high or not higher, depending on what the doctor recommends.
Right.
And it could quickly wipe out even $8 million, so I think it's better to be prepared.
Well, when, what year did we have those experiences? Because we're looking back 10, we're looking back 10 years here.
It was like...
The last two.
Yeah.
When we, when we had that presentation and workshop, it was the last two. What I'm concerned about are drugs like Ozempic, which is right now the number one selling prescribed drug. It's about a $20,000 a year cost to the health plan, so there's some drugs out there that help with syndrome X, cardiovascular disease, by weight management, diabetes management, that are very, very expensive, and their use is skyrocketing right now.
Well, I guess my question is, is, if that's happened over the last 10 years, you know, part of it was the transfer out, the transfers out that we had in 2017, we were still able to maintain that, and what you said is, is that was when we went to the employee wellness clinic?
Yes, and the transfer out, where it says a $2,600,000, that was to help renovate the clinic, and so the Health and Life Fund did help support that build out during that time of year, so that's why we transferred it out of the Health and Life Fund to support it. But you also see we had to transfer 2 million to finish out the year as well.
Right, well, and I guess, really, Judge, my question is, is if that's happened over the last 10 years with drugs, there were, you had mentioned that there was a period of time that that, that those types of things happened, yet if I look at the trend on our total net ending position, we're, we're sitting on, I mean, even if that's, when that's happened in the past...
Well, I'm just telling you that if we had done this, had the same discussion the year before, those drugs, when we started paying them, and we did what you're suggesting, we would have been in trouble because we'd have spent down, and there was no anticipation. You could have looked back years prior to.
Which year was that?
We would have to ask HR what years were specific to those claimants.
Okay, Judge, do you remember which years those were?
I don't remember the years. I remember sitting in plenty of budget discussions and, and having our health consultants tell us about it, so it's vivid in my mind that, fortunately, we had a court that built up some fund balance we were able to take care of, but, and I would be concerned if we started spending it down, because those kind of things can happen and do. May not have happened in the last few years, I don't, I haven't really looked at, but I do know that when it happens, you, you need to have funds.
Okay, but over the past 10 years, we don't see any evidence of that being the case here?
We don't, maybe we don't, but we didn't see them prior to that event happening. So when it happens, it happens.
Would it make more, okay, but we never consume our general fund contingency balance as well?
That's correct. We actually used some contingency balance in the past, too.
Right, but I mean, but that contingency fund balance is, I, I guess my question would be is, is, it concerns me when I have to go and talk to people why we're sitting now on $8.7 million of fund balance in our health fund, and we're still asking them, and the other members of the Commissioners' Court have continued to ask citizens for more money. I mean, maybe there's a monster under the bed, but I think, but I think, but I think that we, I don't think it's prudent, and I don't think that it's appropriate to handle our property owners, particularly since that's the largest part of where our revenue comes from, in a way that we're trying to protect them from a monster under the bed.
Well, I think our voters, who many pay taxes, my thought is that they would prefer us to be prepared, not after the fact, find that we're short of money somewhere along that and not being able to do things.
Yeah, well, sitting on a $150 million balance, and it's the largest that Brazos County's ever had, so I can't think that we have an issue there, Judge.
Well, we hadn't gone through the budget this year, so we'll, we'll see.
Any more questions regarding, or suggestions regarding this Health and Life Fund?
I think this balance is reasonable. We have employees that have serious health problems, and they're going to be getting very expensive drugs, and we need to be prepared for it.
Yeah, I think, I think I've rendered my opinion, I think it's excessive.
Before we go into the Capital Improvement Fund, would you like to take a 10-minute break before we get into the projects?
Yes.
Okay, let's go ahead and do a break.
Take a break.
Yes.
For 10 minutes, and then we'll...
Take a 10-minute break.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we're going to come out of recess.
Okay. I feel like it's time for a little joke, I don't have any capital jokes yet, maybe next year. So right now, we're going to go ahead and discuss capital projects out of our General Capital Improvement Fund, and I want to go over the projects that are in progress, that will be current, that we need to budget for next year because they're actually in the middle or about to start. So the first one's going to be the Central Receiving Building. Remember, this year we have purchased property off of Ashford Hills, and this is where it was suggested to put the Central Receiving Building. This is a project in progress at this moment, and it's budgeted at 5 million, and that is an estimate. The Fleet Services, Rhode and Bridge trucks that were ordered back in June that the court approved because there is ordering open date, and so we went ahead and placed four trucks for Rhode and Bridge for 2025 at $200,006, $200,000, and of course, those trucks have not arrived, and we're expecting them to arrive probably this next year. Of course, the equipment for replacement Tahoe's have been ordered for the ones that have been, for the units that have arrived this year, and so we're still waiting for equipment. They might come in, they might not, and so that's about $46,000. The Sanctuary renovation is budgeted at $8.9 million. The North Whaling renovation, 1.6. There's also a courthouse signage project that has been in the budget for a couple of years, which it is in progress, but it probably won't be completed this year, and so we're needing to budget that as well at $119,000. The administration building envelope, this is to do the windows and the outside areas as well as certain part of the roof of this building. It was a project that was added this year, but of course, the funding has not been placed, but it's in progress. That is budgeted at $6.7 million. The Special Response Vehicle Storage Building at the sheriff's office that has been requested and budgeted in this year is budgeted next year 1.2 million. And the juvenile expansion project at $200,000, which comes to a total of $24,250,586. And these are the projects that are in progress that will not be completed this year, that we need to budget next year. Any questions regarding the progress, the projects, projects?
Projects.
Projects in progress, sorry. Long afternoon already.
Relative to these projects that are listed here?
Mm-hmm.
Of the... Relative to these projects that are listed here, of the 24,250,000, how much is funded? How much do we already have money committed for?
I will have it, I could separate that, and I can give it to you this afternoon. It's just, it's on the presentation currently. I have my reconciliation sheet saved up, and I can give that to you.
Okay. Because I know that for accounting reasons, we have to move everything over to the next year because it's an uncompleted project.
Correct.
But I just wanted to know, of these uncompleted projects...
What has been spent and what was budgeted this year?
Well, what, yeah, where are we relative to budget on each of these?
I can give you actuals.
Because we've collected the revenue for, and put these expenditures in a prior budget, and I'm just curious as to how much of this, how much of this 24 million dollars of current projects under, under construction or in process, how much of that 24 million dollars transfers over to this next year's budget as a need for additional funding?
I could tell you, so the bottom of the, let me go back to the spreadsheet. So part of the funding that's rolling that's current is 18 million. But if you don't mind looking at my reconciliation sheet, which is a little, this is my curation, I could show you what is budgeted for certain projects as well, what has been expensed.
That's why I ask you these questions.
We wish that the computer systems can, you know, do a lot of the work, but nothing's better than spreadsheets. Okay, so the former, let me go to 4,500. Okay, for instance, there's a special response vehicle storage in central receiving, so Commissioners' Court approved both of them together, but we also bought the property at Ashford, so we're separating the costs, which was budgeted at 3.1 million. Right now, the central receiving is estimated at 5 million, but we're leaving 1.2 of it to the sheriff's office because it was original request, so we're actually adding additional to, to cover central receiving. Does that answer that one question regarding central receiving?
Right, so what we've got is two point, if I understand it correctly, looking at your sheet here, we've got 2.934 funded.
Well, this is remaining balance.
But the estimated, okay, that's remaining balance. Whoops.
We budgeted 3.1.
Okay, but it's estimated to be five?
Five, because the projects have been split.
Gotcha.
Due to Ash, due to the property purchase on Ashford Hills. The area that's at the sheriff's office is not big enough to house the whole building, and so that's why we're splitting them in two.
Gotcha, okay. So of the 5 million dollars that we see here on the central receiving building item, there is...
Estimating 2.9 to roll.
Okay, to roll, which means that's still, that's money, that's money that's already there that we'll roll forward.
Yes.
Okay, 2.934. Okay, so that leaves a balance of 2 million that we're going to have to come up with a difference on.
Correct.
And then, if you don't, I mean, we don't need to do the smaller items, but if you'll do the same thing for the sanctuary renovation, which is another larger number?
Mm-hmm. For the sanctuary, it was budgeted at 8 million. At this moment, I have 7.3 remaining, and the sanctuary estimate, estimated is at 8.9, and this is the latest estimate.
8.9, okay. So if I'm reading this correctly, of the 8.9 million, we've already funded, but we're rolling forward the 7.36.
And estimated, right, because I, we still have invoices coming in for the next two months.
Okay, and on your sheet here, it does have the estimate, the 8 million, where it says 8 million there, it does say the 8.9.
Right, so we're adding a little bit to it, and this is based on the architect's estimates.
Great, okay. And North Wing?
North Wing, it was approved at 1.9 this year.
Okay.
At this moment, it's 1.7 that's remaining. And it's budgeted for next year 1.6, and that's with the architect's estimates.
Okay, so that would mean that we have nothing that we're going to need to fund this year.
Correct, no new money.
Okay, in the upcoming budget here.
Correct.
And...
And the envelope?
Yeah, the courthouse, well, I mean, the, the other large items, the courthouse signage project.
The courthouse signage project is 119, and then let me find it real quick. It said digital signage, it was...
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, wrong number, admin building envelope, that's the one, the larger numbers.
They're all large.
Well, they are, but I mean, the ones that are over a million dollars.
So the envelope was a project that was approved this year while we were looking at the sanctuaries, as well as the north wing. Let me scroll down just one second.
I think it's up.
Right here.
Yeah.
So court-approved budget amendments worth 637, and this is for the architectural fees for Plain North. Out of that, to date, I still have remaining 354,000. We still have two months with the invoices, and so the new money will be the 6 million. And this is based off Plain North's estimates.
Okay, so 2 million still needs to be funded on Ashford Hills, 6 million still needs to be funded on...
The envelope.
Envelope, and about 1.5 million on sanctuary renovation.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then where are we on the special response vehicle storage building?
The response, we just discussed that one. It was a project that was part of the central receiving, as well as a special response vehicle for the sheriff's office. It is right here. So court-approved 3.1 as a one project total. And so since we purchased Ashford Hills, those two projects are going to split to be two different projects.
Okay, and so, since they're split, just so we, just for accounting, the special response vehicle storage building of that 1.25 million, I know we had 2.934, but that's what came out of the...
The remaining balance at 2.9.
Ashford Hills, okay.
So court has now approved...
The 2 million balance, so, so am I assuming correctly that the 1.25 million still needs to be funded on this one?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so that's two, three and a half, nine and a half, 10.75 million?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And at the end, I'll show you the fund balance regarding the general capital fund, too.
Okay, I'm just kind of looking at what we need for, to complete the, now, now I've got a figure for...
I'll have it totaled for you.
Okay.
Any more questions regarding the current projects in progress? So now we're going to go over the new projects that the either department, department heads or elected officials have requested, and this is what has been, will be in the proposed budget. Sheriff's about contingency within Commissioners' Court. Usually, we either budget at 6 million or 4 million. This next year, we're going to put 2 million. This is for the what-ifs. Say, for instance, Ashford Hills, that was a project that came in mid-year, and so we use contingency to support Ashford Hills. Or if there's any other items, if the bids come in bigger for the envelope, once they get started, we're able to use that. Commissioners' Court, the agenda software upgrade, oh, sorry.
Okay, and this is capital contingency.
Capital contingency under Commissioners' Court.
And it was how much last year?
4 million, and so I'm decreasing it to 2 million.
Okay.
Okay. Regarding Commissioners' Court agenda software, it's going out of date, and so we're needing to upgrade the agenda software. And so right now, it is proposed as a project, but the funding is going to be coming from contingency, the general, the capital contingency until the quote comes in, so we could place the funding in the correct accounts, okay? The fleet shop, replacement vehicles and equipment, 700,000. Each year, we budget for replacement vehicles. Good news is that the vehicles have been coming in on, you know, sooner than what we have seen in the past year, so this next year, I'm hoping not to come to you and ask to purchase the following year's vehicles for '26. I'm hoping that we can make it all year without doing that, and we could be back on a regular schedule in '26 to purchase replacement vehicles then. This is for the what-ifs, so if a vehicle gets wrecked and we have to replace it, that's where this money will come from. Or if a Rhode and Bridge grader, grader gets, you know, damaged, this is where it would come from. And so this includes for vehicles and equipment that goes along with it, because a lot of times, when that vehicle's totaled, the equipment is totaled as well. It just depends on what the specific accident is. The next is going to be a scanner replacement for Elections Administration. This is 5,800, is considered capital, is to replace one of her scanners, it's addition to the fleet, sorry about that. The tax office, she has a computer replacement as well as a scanner system, and it's 5,800. Tax office has also requested a double-sided sign to be outside, kind of like what you see at the health department, to put outside her office, let her, let people know that they're going to be closed on a certain day, or if a lane's closed, or certain holidays, instead of people getting outside their vehicle, walking up to the door, they're able to hopefully see it as they drive up. The next one's going to be UPS refurbished from the IT department. It's 40,600. Production server replacement, 21,600. The stain refresh, it's 21,600. The backup system replacement is, oh, I'm off.
I can't see that far.
I'm sorry about that. So let me go back to the production server replacement. It's 21,600. I apologize for that. The stain refresh is budgeted at 280,200. And the next couple of items are in gray. I want to remind that those projects will be in the proposed budget. The only thing is that until the auditors and I review the contracts as well as the quotes, to make sure that they're in the proper placement for funding, that's when I'll do a budget amendment to account for it, because sometimes it might be capital, half the quote might be capital, half of it might not be capital, and so instead of doing several budget amendments at the end, we can take care of it as one.
So do we have a rough estimate of about what that amount will be?
Not, Russ, I could give that total to you at the end.
Okay.
And again, it's just quotes.
And I guess comparably for the sheriff's capital?
Yes.
Those are the same contingencies there, okay?
For the, for the VoIP phone system replacement, it's the same thing.